And that's because that's point eight eight acres. And here are your possible actions. Move to approve the site plan as submitted. Move to approve the site plan with conditions. Move to deny or move to defer. And the next slide has the possible motions. And at this time, I'd like to answer any questions. Oh, before I answer questions real quick, I have handed out to you, we had two emailed objections to the site plan and I have provided those for you. I handed them out earlier. They were at your, at your place waiting for you. I did respond to one. One person objected to the, the drive-through window and I responded to, or my responses at the top, that they are not planning on having the drive-through and they're actually taking off that awning, which currently extends over their property line. So they'll be taking that off and coming into conformant, conforming with these zoning ordinance with that. Okay, now I'd like to answer any questions.
I have maybe an extraordinary question of Mr. Hanley. What is the purpose of that street in front of Southern Soul? Because it is a great safety hazard. Hot dogs reuse that as a speeding trying to get around the circle and it, it serves no purpose.
It's been in there historically for a long, long time and it's, it's function now has changed to be in a shortcut to avoid the traffic, sir. Since the district commissioner is here, we may need to look at putting some speed bumps or something in it because it does attract that through that area.
Is there any possibility of making some arrangements with Southern Soul that...
I see two, two of the owners here of Southern Soul. I think that they may want to speak to that, that issue about speeding through there because they have a large number of their pedestrian folks that walk through that area.
I'm just curious, I mean, it is really a safety...
Yeah, it is a little bit.
The biggest problem is everybody taking a lot of that out of the neighborhood.
Okay. Last name Buffkin, B as in boy, U F K I N, first name Griffin. What was the question?
Speak to the traffic through in front of...
Yeah, we would, we don't mind, we would be happy to have a, a speed bump or two out there. Slow down the traffic.
You could use that as your takeout.
There you go. I'll deliver it.
When I, when I spoke to you last month, you were saying that the covered area was for your cooking, not for serving meals.
Well, it's divided up into two sections. There's, what we have now is four or three pits outside. We would like to put them all inside to clean up the area. And so the back part of it would be that. What you have, you would divide that, you got an area over here, I can probably show you over. Oh, right here. So this part right back here would be our pits with a, a smokehouse where everything would be inside. With a, with a wall right there and then there'd be two picnic tables right here.
So it'd be a combination?
Yes. This is strictly a kitchen. There's nothing in there, but it's a kitchen.
So you were saying that two picnic tables would be under that covered area. Where are the other picnic tables going? Where are the other picnic tables going? That's in front, are you gonna keep those?
The ones that are here?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, they'll stay out.
They're gonna stay there. So where's your loading zone going to be?
The loading zone?
Yes.
We have this alley right here that we just... This is our circle alley.
There you go.
That is our, this is where we have one purveyor that delivers groceries and a truck that delivers, you know, paper goods. And they come right here and they stop right here. And then they'd usually do it at six thirty in the morning, six o'clock in the morning.
So it's gonna be in the back?
Yeah.
It's gonna maintain the back?
Well, it says it's in the front.
Yeah, the loading zone is right there.
Okay, well, that's where it is now.
Well, is there any more questions, staff, before Mr. Bryson speaks?
Larry Bryson, agent for the property owners and business owners. There was some concern about, about truck and traffic and how to get, how to drive. So this was relocated to the front. It's easier. They will schedule their deliveries so that they're really able to power the delivery. That way it's not disruptive. Avoid the possibility for any deliveries, which has occurred through circle drive. So we're trying to get all the traffic off the circle drive. Also, we're gonna do some directional signage. This is the, what everybody refers to as the Davis Love building. It's actually on the Southern Soul. There's a directional signage here that will actually direct people that it's a left turn or a left exit only. So that it hopefully will prevent or slow down these right-hand turns into the circle drive and back into the neighborhood. On Brunswick Avenue. I know at least one county commissioner said that maybe they could profile a place with a police officer over here to, to try to, to ma- manage that a little bit, at least for some period of time. But that's a different subject. There is a advising wall that will be placed at that location right here in front of this, is seating. And I think there's a, the architectural plan, they actually showed the, the table location.
I have a question. The alley in the back. It says it's a thirty-foot public alley. How much of that thirty feet are you using for parking space?
We are using a portion of it. Here's the parking space. There is the edge of the alley. So probably forty percent.
Forty percent. Do you have an agreement with the county to do that?
Well, I, hopefully part of this application is to get it approved before that.
We're approving now?
The, yes, the adjacent, across Brunswick Avenue, the adjacent alley is used for, for parking purposes also.
The adjacent alley across...
The continuation of this, you go across Brunswick Avenue, there is parking approved as part of, part of that site plan too.
That's wider. As part of this site plan?
No.
No, it's part of previous site plan.
For the other shopping center across, across Brunswick.
Okay, well, I'm not talking about over there. I'm talking about over here. So why is that relevant over here?
Because it's the same use in the same alley.
Same alley. So that, so you're saying they're, they're using the alley there too?
Yes, we're parking approved.
Okay, are they, okay. The same thirty-foot width?
Theirs is configured differently, but it's essentially the same width, yes.
Yeah, thirty...
But it's paved?
It's paved.
Theirs is paved?
Yes.
All right, this one's not completely paved. This is part of its dirt, correct?
Uh, yes.
Yes, part of its dirt. And my understanding is that towards the building next door to it, the business next door, is that people have parked up next to that warehouse where the warehouse would be. They've parked in there and in pulling out, there really isn't much space between the biz- back of that building there and, and, and people parking there. And they have, people have pulled out of there and pulled into these people's back door. And so I think there's difficulty on parking by that person's business there. Now, if we're gonna allow this, I would definitely like to see some, you know, those concrete pillars that people put up at the edge of the alley so that people do not back into that, that building there. Because that's a real problem.
Are you talking about the Minute Market Building?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
That's a real problem. Because it is so narrow between that building and, and this warehouse building. It's very, very narrow there. And it may be a thirty-foot alley, but it doesn't, doesn't, it's not sufficient room that people, if they park a truck there, when they pull out, if they're not careful, they're, they're just back right into this building. So if this is gonna be allowed, I wanna see some pillars put up there to protect that building.
And Ms. Watson, I, I, so, so those would be those last, I guess it's one, two, three, four, five, well, about four or five parking spaces on the end of that.
How many that would need, you'd need to protect that building?
Yeah. I, I, I see, I see what you're saying.
Now, that's county property. So can I ask him to put up the, the pillars as part of the, I can? Okay. Well, that needs to be done and I, I'm not going to approve it personally without that happening.
You're talking about some, some sort of bollards of some...
I'm talking about those, those cement, those, what do you call them?
Yeah, bollards, yeah. We call them bollards. Bollards.
So I didn't understand that, that, that...
B O L L A R D S.
Bollards.
Bollards.
Not ballards, bollards.
Bollards.
I want to see several bollards put up there to protect that building.
But there's still a question in that area because the distance between the building and the, the warehouse is very narrow.
It is very narrow.
Very narrow. And where they were going to put the canopy over, people, when they used to, when the liquor store was there and there's a drive-through, who owns that property? And if there are parking spaces in the back, are you gonna be able to maneuver out in that area to go out to Demery? Or would you just have to go straight down the alleyway and go out into the residential area and come back on to Demery?
See, I think that alley gets a lot of use. I was, I was over there to the property and the people coming around that building, both going around it and coming around it because they're avoiding all that part, they use that as a, a lot of people use that as a cut-through like that.
I think, we're just trying to clean up our, if we, if we were able to get these spots here, you're gonna, it's gonna be a dedicated lot and you're not gonna have, you know, that, that is a problem, people just using that for...
They do, they do run around.
What we're trying to do is, we're gonna pave the whole thing out and present it as a parking lot. So people aren't riding around in circles looking for parking. They see this and they don't wanna go back there. They don't wanna go into the neighborhood. They don't wanna ride around in circles. They're gonna say, well, there's the parking right there.
So you're gonna park, you're gonna, you're gonna pave the alley all the way to your last parking space?
Where?
Yes, ma'am.
You're gonna pave county property?
This is dark, right there. We're trying to clean it up. We just want to have this asphalt. It's, I mean, we can, we can cut this whole thing down and just leave it like it is, you know? We're just trying to make it look nice. I don't, I don't understand. We can, we can just...
Wait, wait, wait. All right. All right, Larry. So, okay. Yes. Right, where your parking is.
To actually sign this so that the people who come in to park exit the same way they do.
All right, right, right next to the building, really where the liquor store was, right? I mean, that really abuts the property next door. There's a huge thing where, where, where there's a cement thing and then it kind of drops off always in a big hole.
We wanna fill this all in, make it...
Whose property is that?
Tricia Barefoot, nobody wants to do anything, so we're gonna try to clean it up, you know? The landlord doesn't wanna spend any money, so we're gonna fill the holes up. We're gonna put fresh pavement down. We're gonna make it...
Do you have any problem with putting up those bollards?
No, not at all.
I have a question. Are you sure that we're, Ms. Watson is speaking of belongs to...
Because it's just, it's a disaster. It's potholes, it's dirt, it's rocks. And we're just trying to clean it up. That's all we're doing.
Okay.
If you're, if we have dedicated parking, I just don't think that somebody's gonna ride around and park in the neighborhood. They're gonna see the cars there and mark there.
Okay, were you talking in that particular area, are you sure Ms. Barefoot owns that property?
Yeah. I will know.
I don't think that she does. No, not up to that, not up to where that, um... To that, just to the liquor store, that's it.
Yeah.
But what he's talking about is further over.
Let me ask staff, as I understand it, though, that the parking here along the alley is not deep enough to hold cars or trucks and particularly pickups? That the trucks will stick out into the alley?
Yes, some, yes. They'll use part of the pavement on the alley and part of it will be on Davidson's property or David, former Davidson's property. So the actual asphalt, nose to nose, is gonna be like sixty feet in, in places.
Right, right. The, the dri- the driveline, according to this, is approximately twenty-four, twenty-four feet wide. A normal, a normal road's twenty feet wide. So it's...
But, but there's a building here that, that, that comes out.
Right, right. And that's, and that's, and that's, that's where you're proposing that ballards, bollards be placed?
Bollards be placed. How, how far apart should they be placed? Every two feet, every three feet, two feet?
I would suggest no, no wider than a car can get through, so probably about every six feet. That would, a car can't get through six feet.
Okay. Well, how much ever it takes.
But believe me, we can abandon the whole thing. We don't have a whole lot of money. But we're trying to make it look good, you know? If we could just, we could leave...
And we're trying to help you work it out. We're trying to help you work it out, okay? We're trying to help you work it out, okay? Don't get excited. All right.
Griffin, are you, they're parking there now, aren't you?
Yeah. I would keep them to park wherever they want now.
There's no, there's really no...
And, and that's how that man's, that's how that store next door got its door bashed in because they're just parking back there with no protection.
We got the bollards taken care of.
Got the bollards taken care of, okay.
And we are eliminating, you know, currently there's an issue here that David gets called on once a day. Where they pull in and they're setting that way out in the street. So those parking spaces are eliminated. We're, we're putting a, a walkway from the parking back here all the way to the front. And trying to clean up everything, so it's a little more controlled and be an organized case.
Okay. And you say you're relocating trees. Where are you relocating trees to?
Well, the only thing we're relocating is these palm trees.
Yeah.
And we're just gonna find some spots to put this in.
You're not putting them on your landscape plan on the side over there?
No, we didn't actually show them over here because we don't get credits for palm trees. We're just gonna find some spots to put this in.
Okay.
So this is all the...
There is a very large hedge there next to the alley when you first enter. Is that staying or going?
We're, we're taking this hedge out and relocating it here.
Oh, you are, okay. Okay. Oh, okay.
But we...
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Do we need to stipulate about the drive-through?
It's coming on here and it'll be removed, but you would have to stipulate about the bollard placement.
David, question is that alleyway, it says public alleyway, is that an easement or actually county-owned right-of-way? Or is it just an easement as alleys many are? As a question.
I don't know about that one. I think it'd probably be recorded because that's an old subdivision back in there.
I'll just question ahead of that.
It's probably got dedication to it.
So we have to then put something in for them to be able to use part of that alleyway for parking?
Well, yeah, he's gonna get, to, to, to work in that alley, he's gonna get a right-of-way permit.
And he'll need that for the bollards, bollards?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, he, he needs that for, for the bollards, for the paving and for the sidewalk part that's on right-of-way.
Okay, so they'll all be lumped into one?
They'll all be one permit, yes.
Okay.
Can you put any signs up that would discourage people from using the alley to exit?
Which we do.
Well, with permission, we would like to put signage along here that, that says this is not an exit. To, to keep people from going further down the alley. Now, the reason we want to do this, these are ninety-degree parking rather than ankle parking. We angled it to encourage people to back up and feel it's more alley. We want them to really come in and park and then back out and exit the same way they came in.
Most people are, like me, exit through the convenience store parking lot. I guess that's between you and the convenience store owner.
Is there any public comment? I mean, it's not a public portion, but I'm giving someone the opportunity to, Mr. Patel, would you wanna say something?
Yeah.
My name is Bharat. I'm the owner, operator of the Island Foods, which is next to Southern Soul Barbecue.
Speak up, please.
My name is Bharat. Last name is Suthar, S U T H A R. I'm the business owner, operator of the Island Foods, number two. And this is ongoing issue as far as the parkings and the, the people coming in the parking, in my parking lot as well as the, the open lot right next to my property, line up there. There is a couple of times that's happened, that the customer parks over there for two, three hours and don't show up. And my customer does not have enough parking to come in in my store. People are parking on the gas pumps during the busy time and they were going, walking into the restaurant to takeouts. And generally, you know that restaurants is busy and takeout takes like almost thirty to forty-five minutes. Every time I had to call to the, the main number, even they were busy, sometimes they were picking up, sometimes not. And they were telling their customers to come and, and move the vehicle from there. Now, the, there is a couple of issues, even in this plan right here.
They were proposing, okay, this parking right here. This is an easement between two property lines, which they're gonna remove this one. People are using this easement for going back and, back and forth. It's not supposed to be a commercial use for between two properties and emergency purpose. Fire, fire department also knows this issues that, uh, parking that over. They were showing this nine feet over here. This four, like, four parking, parkings over here. There's no commercial vehicles gonna pass through. Right now, there is a, the garbage truck going through. There's a, the garbage truck is passing through here, uh, every morning. It's nine feet is not enough. Uh, the, I've subbed in some of the photos today on the, the...
I can see some of the photos. I can, I just have one set. If you want us to see some of the photos. I don't know.
Yes.
You want me to pass them down or? Did you look at that?
I, I, I mean, he emailed it.
They represented that and I couldn't rotate them.
Were you printing it out?
It made no sense to me, you said that.
Put the map back.
The map for side plan?
That's, that's one, the problem right here. The second problem is recently, two weeks back, one of the customers is going to the Southern Soul Barbecue. Then we backed up the truck and it's banged right on the back door of, of my property. I already talked to the one of the owner and I haven't got any answer from them. They're supposed to fix that. Now, this is the prices right now that I cannot fix myself. Landlord is not gonna fix it that soon. Their customer is damaging my property. They have to fix it. Two years back, I replaced the Eppenstein unit, which damaged by the one of the customer. They parked on the back there, just spoke to my Eppenstein unit. And then I had to move that Eppenstein unit from there to put it on a roof. There's a six thousand dollar that I spent to move that, uh, Eppenstein. Second thing, that they were saying that they're gonna park all the way down over here. Now, this is the parallel parking right here. The normal truck size is about like eight to ten feet. They were saying this is thirty feet, ten feet right here. But I took some pictures, I was already in there. There's a truck parked right there. It's almost four feet outside of there. This is the problem right here. They're parked right on a alley. There, there is a traffic going back and forth on this side. Now, if twelve-foot truck or ten-foot truck is gonna back out, it needs another ten foot to just maneuver the truck either going right or left. So that means again, somebody's gonna damage that. Now, we, we gotta talk about putting the, the bollards up there. How far from the property line that you're gonna put it in because it's gonna affect the ongoing traffic.
Well, my suggestion, my thought is to put it at the edge of your property. At the edge of the alley where your alley, where the alley meets your property line.
How often they're gonna put it, like, it's ten feet, fifteen feet?
Every, every, every six feet, every six feet.
If they're gonna put it in and if it's gonna be a second, we have to, uh, get the permission from my landlord to put it in.
Well, it would, they, they would be on the alley, not the...
Yeah, it wouldn't be on your property.
Any, then it's not gonna be enough room to, uh, broadcast, doing another... What I suggest is that any of your members come down on a sign and just look at it personally. Okay, if they were busy or not busy, anytime, come out and look it up there. This is a big mess right here. Everybody's parking because, and this is not the problem right now. I'm gonna put another bedding on that empty parking lot, then it's gonna be a more problem. Because all of this parking right here, all the way home, there, in the end of my other property line, it's gonna be a mess. This parking right here, this is the, uh, the right side. Only nine feet clear and plus general parking. Right now, there are two garbage cans right here facing towards this way. Garbage truck comes in, my parking lot, picks up all the garbage and that's why the whole parking lot is here. My customer comes in, around and parks right next to my building because I have like four parkings.
Right.
And one is the handicap parking. So they park on the left side. All part holds, it's created by this customer. They're going back and forth. What I like to do, like, everybody's going right now that they like to go. I'm not suggesting that they were going right here because they have to, uh, fix this problem first. Why can't they just put one employee on the lunchtime that they can direct the traffic? I would suggest that. I have to answer back that I cannot control. If you have your own business, if you cannot control, why the heck you are, uh, developing the business? Every time I had to call the two trucks to come by and pick it up, they were parked like almost two hours, three hours ago.
Kinda have them parked at the same spot.
And they were saying that there is a seventy-seven parking.
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two. So that's only the seat park, right? Only the dining park, right? Where the people is gonna park, they're gonna take out. We're not considering that. We have eleven employees that they were saying that. But two shift is twenty-two employees. So out of seventy parkings, twenty-two parking is, uh, is powered by them. And the owners gonna park. There's three or four owners at the time at the property. Where they're gonna park.
Larry, can I address these concerns?
Just, I think where the garbage is gonna be, how that's gonna work.
Right. Well, we, we're relocating one of the dumpsters of the year with all the, uh, stuff that's here. If we can accommodate this whole business, including, uh, the Davis Love in one container, that's what we do, preference we do that. Otherwise, we've got another location that this one's at. Currently here, it's going to go away. Of course, this property is brought, uh, you know, owned by Mrs. Hart. Uh, of course, this property is, uh, you know, called by Mistress Hart, um, and if she wishes to dance the rest off, to, to, to ensure that none of this traffic is making that progress, then certainly she could do that. We could put ballards up there to keep traffic, but for, too, as well, uh, which would be, I think, okay with, with so-and-so. Of course, he would then, his traffic would come to here, he could access those four spaces that are back there, so if he wanted to like total control to prevent that.
But you're talking about, they're gonna access those parking spaces through somebody else's property.
What they're, I'm sorry. I'm talking to people concerned about the flow through.
How will they access that parking behind the, no, you're right through there, that's right.
Yeah, they'll have to go, they're gonna go right the way they go right now, which is on that person's property next door to get to those parking spaces.
Well, and they've done that for, for years.
They've done it for you.
If they would prefer that, that that not happen, then Mistress Hart would, would close that off, would be either ballards or fence, or you direct us to do it, we can do it.
If she were to close that off, then where would his customers park?
Well, they come in off of Demery Road, so.
Yeah, it's not gonna affect.
In the front, if they wanna.
They have parking in the back by the alley.
Which is her property.
Mm-hmm.
If they want to. She's not just in the front, he is parking in the back.
Parking alone here.
He could get back there, still be on his prop, on their property. Couldn't, couldn't staff parking, park in the back parking lot there where the warehouses are?
Is that office going to be used, or is that office building gonna be used? Just bet you couldn't like lock off part of that and put some of your parking over there.
And where's that second dumpster?
Inside that park.
Is that the alley there?
No, it's inside the, is it inside the, where is it?
It's inside the warehouse?
Where is the, the second dumpster?
That dumpster, the second dumpster.
So, are you gonna remove?
But where is that, you know, is it on the al- alleyway, or it's?
It's on the, uh.
Warehouse property?
Southern Soul property.
And, and that, that dumpster that's in the corner there, the, where's, is that gonna be removed completely?
This one?
Yes.
Yes.
Who said no? It's yes, right, yes.
Well, well, if, if this is now.
Mr. Bryson, i- is the head-in parking vital to the project, or could it be, you know, parallel parking, or in there for?
Well, we would lose, uh, we probably lose half of it if we.
That's what I'm asking, is it vital to the project?
Well, it's vital to have as many as we can parking places as we can get.
How many is your?
Well, your calculation says you have to have seventy-two.
So, it is critical.
Yeah, Mr. Bryson, could, could you point out where, where the adjacent building is, you know, the corner of the adjacent building, I, it, it's.
Yeah, it, it doesn't show up on the survey, uh, and I'm kinda guessing, but I think it is right along here.
So, so it's behind, it's, it's actually behind, there's parallel parking spaces that you're suggesting?
Yes, it is, yes, it is.
Right, okay.
I went over there and it, it's all the parking spaces behind that building.
Right, right, but the, but the building itself is behind the parking spaces that they've got designated as parallel parking spaces, if I'm, if I'm correct.
Yes.
Correct, it, it's not here, it's, it's over here, I believe it's right here.
Right, and, and the other question is, is that alley thirty feet the whole way, or is it just thirty feet to that corner?
It's just thirty, not to the subsidence.
Okay.
Oh, and then it narrows?
And then it, and then it narrows where the parallel parking is.
It narrows then where the other building is.
Right.
That's why they can't get, keep backing into the building when they're parking there, that's why I don't think that's a good place to park.
Right, well, that's, well, that's why they've got the parallel parking shown there, as opposed to ninety degrees, they don't have room to put parallel parking in, or per, perpendicular parking in that spot.
I was there the other day and somebody was parked behind that building.
See, that's the corner.
There, there was a truck parked behind the building, facing the building, right there, it was this way, it was this way.
It's because there's no parking spaces set up, it's just sand, that would be eliminated when you put, hey, that, put the lines in.
Okay, does somebody else wanna speak, since you let somebody speak?
I, I, that is, it's a town, okay.
Alright, well, so, um. You would be willing to put, um, ballards along the side where the, um, um, yes, along the side, no, no, up, 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 yeah, right there. Along, no, along, just follow the, uh, building where the liquor store was, and you'd be willing to put ballards along that line right there, along that line right there? No, not all the way, just at the end of the building to the end of the parking spot. There.
Along there or along the alley across from?
Both. So, you won't go this way, it would help protect those other people.
We're absolute five blocking all of that off, we were doing it because we thought the neighbors wanted to know if it was on, we didn't, we, we're five blocking it off, it's dangerous over there.
It is.
Dangerous, but pizza, the pizza vehicles are dangerous. But in front of the restaurant, no one sure it's the one way either, they all come down and through in front of the restaurant.
Oh.
To the south, and then make the bend to get into the roundhouse, that's something else.
Yeah.
But I mean, our, the person that owns our property says yes, and then, you know, they say, Miss Hart says yes, we don't have any problem locking that off, I mean, I, I, we literally thought that, you know, the neighbors want that open either.
Well, I don't know that you wanna close a public alleyway.
Well, not the, between the building and the.
Yeah, that, yeah, right, that part.
That's how everyone gets on into the roundhouse.
Right, I think blocking that would be an excellent idea.
But isn't that still contingent upon Mrs. Hart's approval?
Well, if it goes on the alley and edges of her property, she didn't have to prove anything.
That's really up to her.
She's talking about that side right there.
Huh?
You know, you're not talking just about the alleyway, you're speaking about that, that, that perspective easement right there.
That easement there?
Yeah.
Not blocking that.
No, no, they're talking about where the canopy right, see right there, right there, in that, in that area right there.
Cut that off.
Right, right.
Then I don't think that she would have a, she would have.
Right.
Because she has parking back there.
Well, right there.
Yeah.
That's true, they can still come around and get to those spaces, right? There's enough room, I mean, there's a concrete, there's a concrete.
Divider.
Divider that comes out there, and the people would still have room to then turn around and come back and park in those spots?
Yes.
Okay, well, I think that, that would help solve some of that, um, what do y'all think? What do y'all think?
Closing that cut-through by the old liquor store would help a lot.
I think so, I think so too, make a lot safer for a lot of people.
Make a lot of people inconvenience.
Because people are gonna be coming down through the alley, and people are gonna be coming off Demery, and there you go, right back there, that's what you got. Plus, you got that truck that keeps coming, the dirt, the dumpster truck that keeps coming around. So, that would stop that as well, which would keep the potholes off the property next door. And, uh, so I think that would be, and, and it would be also a designation, hello, it'd also be a designation to folks that that property doesn't belong to Southern Soul. And so I think that would be an excellent thing to do. Plus, put the ballards behind that guy's building, those people's building.
Don't dream about ballards tonight.
I learned a new word. But I think that would go a long way to help that, that horrible situation there.
So, we, basically, we're gonna baller this?
Yes.
Follow this way, and maybe yard that to, to the corner of, of the building and beyond.
So, you block up a parking.
Right, and as long as, so that, so that you're protecting that building with ballards.
Right.
And then cutting that part there so that people won't go and fencing along the way, so they won't go through, right? Okay, do we need to put all that in motion somehow? I think we should, I think we should.
Wait a minute, hold on, I'm sorry, I'm gonna let one more person speak, and that's it, go ahead.
Um, I'm hoping, um, Lisa Norton, N-O-R-T-O-N, I'm hoping to help the boys with Southern Soul to dispel a few myths, but I wanna make sure that I understand that the county is certain that they own, based on accurate title examinations, this alleyway, that they can allow someone to put up fencing and ballards. So, I'm, I'm understanding that correctly, that that, uh, that subdivision has dedicated, we've got record that that's been dedicated to.
That's, yeah, it's an old subdivision, so they dedicated back then, and the board accepted stuff, so.
Alright, um, the other question is that, um, love the new expansions, I understood that, uh, the, the commercial cookers were being questioned last to clean the grease and debris, and that it was running down into the drain, into that road. And, and I don't know, I'm asking, I'm trying to dispel.
Right now, we are putting it straight into our grease trap, our grease trap's open right there.
Okay, Harrison, so you've got a grease trap that's catching, so when you move, you're gonna move these.
Everything's gonna, everything will go inside, there'll be a, uh, I think it's either twelve inches or eighteen inches, everything will be closed right there, to where we'll be able to wash all of it and right into, it takes away all questionable, everything.
Okay, and the other question I wanted to ask, and this is something else that people are questioning, is this an application for outside dining tonight, or have they already been granted outside dining permission? Because we've all had our wonderful barbecue sandwiches, and I'm just curious, are they already?
They, they, they were already approved when they initially showed that on their original site plan.
Okay, so they're already.
Yes.
They were approved for the. Alright, I thank you, alright, um, the motion on the table.
Uh, could we put the motions back up, please?
Still without the necessary approval.
Yeah, uh, alright, let me try, I need help, I need help somewhere. Uh, I moved to approve site plan SP thirty-one forty-seven, with the conditions that ballards be placed behind, um, the mini mart building adjacent to, on the alley property line, to protect that building, and that ballards be placed at the, um, end of the former liquor store building to the alley, approximately six feet apart, or less, not more, or less. And that fencing be placed then from one ballard behind the liquor store where it ends at the parking, over to, um, the building so that it cuts off the parking, park through, the thoroughfare, that's my motion.
Do we have to add about the able-to-use alleyway?
We're gonna make.
That's gonna be on a permit.
Yeah, they're gonna, yeah.
You don't have to.
That'll be on a permit.
That doesn't need to be in the motion.
Alright, I'm confused.
That's my motion.
I don't know where the fences going now. Cause I thought the ballards were gonna take care of the fence part.
I thought they were gonna cut it off, so that people couldn't go through.
Alright, where on here do you want the fence?
Alright, let me, let me, let me get it.
They were saying the fence right here.
But while she's talking about that.
The ballards right here. Ballards.
My motion is put ballards from the end here to there.
It's on their property.
Right.
My motion is put, where was the building?
Right.
Building when they backed up, ballards go on that, the ballards not to be less than sixty feet, not to be more than sixty feet.
Alright.
Then, when the ballards are here, cut off this thoroughfare to the alley by putting a fence up here, on, on the alley, the alley, exactly, to cut the, the people up there. Are I using these people's property to cut through the alley all the time?
Alright.
So that this preserves this man parking here next door.
Now, Ms. Watson, you may wanna make those ballards as well, rather than fencing, uh, that, that would be, it'd be easier to make, they can't drive, they can't drive through six feet, and the ballards would be consistent.
Not less than six feet apart.
I, I, I would, well, nevermind.
That's my motion.
I, I, I would, I would suggest that that's done incorporation with the adjacent property owner.
Well, they're gonna put it on the alley, so it should, they shouldn't have a problem. That's my motion, is there a second?
I second.
Thank you.
This motion on the table, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
May I add that they, we enjoyed the barbecue?
Those opposed?
I'd like to enjoy one right now.
This means I've been adjourned here.
Good job.